Let's do it.
Let's do it.
Okay, we'll get started. Welcome to Santaquin City Planning Commission Meeting. It is Tuesday, January twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty five, and we're getting started at seven oh one. Um, all right, Commissioners, staff, anyone want to get us started with an implication or inspirational thought?
I could say prayer.
You did it last time.
I know, but if no one else.
That's right. You do a great job.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our Father in Heaven, we thank thee for the great blessings that we have received for being able to meet here and have a place to meet and being able to live in such a wonderful community. We ask thee at this time as we meet that we will be able to understand fully the things we are discussing and we will be able to ask the right questions and come to a good consensus on what is best for our town and we will be able to help our town to be a better place and do the right things. And these things we ask and pray in the name of thy Son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Waite. All right. Would anyone like to lead us in the pledge tonight?
I can. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Nixon. All right. There's the agenda. We'll go in that order. So we'll start with the public forum because that's what we do. So I'll open the public forum at seven oh two. Anyone have anything they want to say during the public forum? Okay, then we will close the public forum at seven oh two and move ahead with the agenda item number one.
Okay, so this first item, Aspen's gonna do the presentation. She's done a lot of this, a lot of the work on this. I've been giving some suggestions along the way, but she's done most of this work, so I thought it'd be appropriate for her to do the presentation. And so.
Thanks.
Okay, this is the same presentation we reviewed last week, but some Commissioners weren't here. And then with the public hearing that will be needed after, we're looking at reorganizing the setbacks in each zone. We're not changing the setbacks. We just are creating tables and eliminating the, some of the wording in the paragraphs. Um, in the, as a residential example for the R ten, this is what the table will look like. There's the building setbacks for front, street side, side and rear. There's non-residential use parking accessory structure setbacks. And then the notes are mostly regarding the uh, reduced side and rear setbacks for the fire rated walls. And then this is a commercial example, similar table as the residential. Uh, the notes are a little bit longer because the commercial side setbacks have more variability with like sharing walls. We've also updated all the residential setback figures. Uh, this is the previous one. As you can see, the accessory building for the rear setbacks is two feet, which has never been allowed. So we've just corrected that error with the new figure to the right. We didn't create setback figures for any like commercial zones because there's so much variability with the side setbacks and things. Um, the Main Street Business District already has a thorough setback table, so we've included the parking setbacks, which were previously found on the landscape table. And then we've also added words like building just to be very specific on which setbacks we're referring to. And to create consistency, if a non-residential zone abuts a residential zone, an additional five feet of landscaping will be required. This has been the standard for most zones. Um, for reference, this is our current landscaping table that we'd like to replace with a note directing builders and individuals to specific zones for the landscape and building setbacks. And then also any area that is not being used for building or parking will still have to be landscaped. And then this landscape table that shows the minimum landscape percentage requirements will be replaced. Uh, one of the differences for the multifamily areas, we've created just a set requirement of thirty percent. Previously, there was some variation depending on where which zone the multifamily was in, whether it was thirty percent or they just didn't mention a requirement at all. And then just to summarize, uh, we're creating setback tables for each zone. We're updating the residential setback figures. Uh, we've standardized a few code requirements such as all non-residential that abuts a residential zone must require an additional five feet of landscaping. And multifamily requires thirty percent to be landscaped. And then we're replacing the landscape setback table with minimum percentage to be landscaped with the note directing to check each specific zone for the setback requirements. And then we sent each of you a copy of the draft of the ordinance. And there were just a couple changes that we made. Do you have something?
So yeah, we made a few changes. Chairman Wood emailed and let us know a few little items that he noticed um, while he's reviewing it. So we'll go over those really quick.
Um, in one of the residential zones, we just forgot to include the word hour for the fire resistant walls. And the other change was in the commercial light manufacturing, I wanna say.
Sounds a long ordinance.
Okay, it was in the industrial zone as well. Um, it had previously said a three foot rear setback when it's actually two feet. So we've corrected that.
Because again, we didn't want to, uh, we weren't looking at really changing the setbacks. So the current setback is two feet in all the non-residential zones for the rear setback. And then in the residential for an accessory, it's three feet. And that's how it's listed in the code right now. So we just want to make sure we are consistent with what's in the code. Yeah, I think that was it. Yeah, the same thing. Yeah. And so just to finish up really quick, the, why this came about is the landscaping table in, uh, it has building setbacks for landscaping and parking. And they were contradicting what our building setbacks were in the zone. And even in that table, it was contradicting each other in that table even. Just different things within the table were contradicting each other. And so we needed to update that landscaping table. And so we thought the best way to do that would be to create these tables um, within each individual zone. So all setback requirements for landscaping, the parking, the, the building, it's all in one place in that zone. Because we were getting uh, multiple site plans where they didn't know there was a landscaping setback for parking. Uh, and so they would do the, the building, but they didn't do a, didn't know about the parking. And they would come to DRC and they'd have to redo their entire site plan because of that. And so it was taking more time for the city, more time for the developer and for everyone. So we definitely needed to update that landscaping table and this is kind of what we've come up with.
Uh, the responsibility tonight is to hold a public hearing and then to make either a positive or negative recommendation to the city council.
All right. Thank you. Thanks, Aspen. It's a lot of work. I think it's gonna be a good change though. Um, assuming it moves forward. So we do have a public hearing tonight, which we need to take care of for this proposed code amendment. So let's do that now. I'll open the public hearing at seven ten and invite any comments, Commissioners. Okay, then we will close the public hearing at seven ten. Um, can we go back and look at the first um, residential zones? There was the note under the first one, but I think that note was the same, had the same mistake in it under the next two residential zones as well. And maybe we can just double check that just to be sure. That one right there.
Right here?
Yeah, so we got it there, but I think the next two residential zones had that same issue. Nope, that one's got it.
I think it's in our notes. Under notes number three.
That's one hour.
One hour more. Okay, good. Perfect. Perfect. Yeah, I thought I saw it in, in another one, but it looks like it was just that first one. So that's great.
There's a lot to review. So we were going through it and we, it, it was difficult sometimes because we go through it and your mind is reading it the way you want it to and we would miss things and we had multiple people look at it.
That's exactly why I thought it was in another one. Um, yeah, I, you open the packet and you see sixty eight pages and you're like, oh man. So I appreciated that warning upfront. No, it was good that we had talked it through beforehand though. And um, so I think we've, we've seen this and I think it's gonna be a good change.
Can we see the industrial um, notes section also one more time? Yeah. Right there. See the yellow in our packet is a three foot spelled out and then let me make sure I'm telling you right. Yeah, and then two foot in the side. So. And that's why, that's something that Trevor or Commissioner Wood, sorry, Commissioner Wood, uh, let us know. Um, and so do your, how the code is written currently, it's a two. Yeah. And so we just, uh, when we're copying and pasting or writing things up, we accidentally put.
No, you already corrected it, so you're good.
I do appreciate the thorough review though.
It, it definitely, it, it does help us too. Um, and so thanks for sending in your comments and it helps us because we miss things too, so.
All right, any other questions?
Yeah, I think it looks good. You guys are great. That's a lot of work. So I like the graphs a lot more. It's easier to read. I think it's easier for everyone to read architects and engineers to hurry and reference our code and be able to create those plans for DRC. So.
That's opportunity for, yeah, conflicting sections of the code. Yeah, I think it's gonna be great. Okay, well, we need to forward a recommendation to the city council on this proposed code amendment. Is anyone prepared to make a motion to that effect?
I will. I will make a mo- um, make a motion to recommend approval of the proposed code amendment which adopts setback tables, updates setback figures and simplifies landscaping requirements.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Tolman. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioners Nixon and Milk. Um, all right, any further discussion? Okay, let's vote. Commissioner Tolman.
Yes.
Commissioner Waite.
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Commissioner Wood, yes. Commissioner Nixon.
Yes.
Commissioner Milk.
Yes.
Okay, that is forwarded with a positive recommendation and it is unanimous. All right. Let's move on to agenda item number two. This is um, an amendment to the general, general plan with regard to the moderate income housing plans.
All right. So it's that time of year again where we've, we have to update our moderate income housing strategies. Again, I know planning Commissioners are aware, but I'll just kind of go over why we have to do this uh, just in case anyone watches this in the future um, on, on YouTube so they understand what, what we are doing here and what we are recommending, what the planning commission is recommending to the city council. So a few years back, the state uh, passed a law that requires us to create a moderate income housing plan and have strategies that we have to report on every year by August first. And we have to show how we met those strategies or we are working towards those strategies. Uh, if we, we are required to have at least three strategies. And if we don't meet those three strategies, the city can be fined upwards of two hundred thousand and we can lose our transportation funding from the state, which would have a very large impact on the city. So it's something that we do have to, uh, we do have to meet. Uh, if we want to have priority funding for transportation, then we need to do five strategies. And so that's what we've been trying to do each year is have five strategies so we can qualify for that uh, priority funding for transportation funds. And so this year, we don't have to do this every year and we really don't have to update all these statistics until we do a complete overhaul of the general plan. But I, I try to update this every few years. All the, all the items that have changed, all the statistics, they come from um, the US Housing and Urban Development or the census. So that's where we got most of this. There is one section where we look at rentals and what's for sale on Zillow and different sites like that to kind of have a, a picture of what's happening in that moment. And so I'm not gonna go through all of this, but uh, if you do have any questions, I, I can try to answer. Uh, but again, this is more statistics we got from the, the federal government and the census. Uh, but I thought it would be interesting just to go over, let's see, this right here. This is, uh, Aspen went through and looked at different sites for homes for sale. And this was in December. Uh, and so it's kind of a snapshot of what was going on in December. And so affordable housing is considered eighty percent of the area income, medium income, which I believe uh, in that first page is somewhere around a hundred and five to a hundred and ten. Uh, so it's eighty percent of that. So what was for sale, we had sixty three that was at or above a hundred percent AMI. Um, for, and how we calculated that is we looked at getting a mortgage at a certain percentage. I think we did uh, six or seven percent to try to make it kind of close of what's going on right now. But it doesn't include like property tax or anything like that. It's just more mortgage, just a mortgage at six to seven percent. And uh, sixty three percent were at a hundred percent or more. And then we had twenty eight, so twenty one at the eighty to a hundred and then seven at eighty to fifty. So really there is only seven homes that were at the eighty percent or below that are considered affordable. Um, per the definition of affordable housing. So that's kind of um, and uh, again, that's just for, for mortgage, but that affordable housing is right around three hundred and fifty nine thousand. Um, that's what technically per the state is considered affordable in Santaquin. Um, but it's probably actually a little bit higher than that when you add property tax and home insurance and different things like that. So we also looked at rentals. I thought that would be, that's something that showed a planning commission really quick. It's interesting. So we do have more rentals that are closer to the affordable. Now again, that's eighty percent of AMI. So is it really affordable? You know? Um, probably not to some people, but if we go off of that definition, uh, we had, let's see, about twenty, twenty out of the twenty six, I believe, somewhere right around there were considered affordable. Now there was seven that were considered like really affordable. So the eight hundred and twenty two or below. No, sorry, the thirteen thousand, six hundred a month or below. There were seven units renting at that price. So this is something I thought I'd just show you a snapshot of what it, what it looks like right now. But now we'll go to the strategies. This is what we're really reviewing. And the recommendations you'll be forwarding will be what strategies you want to do. So we're doing it a little bit different this year. Um, the previous years, we just had five strategies. And we would see if the planning commission liked it and forward a recommendation. This year we are, we have six different strategies. We only need to choose five. And multiple of those strategies have several options. So we just need to choose one of those options. And so I wanted to see which way you want to do it. We have, we have what we have in front of us and it shows the red lines what we did last year and then we underlined what we're doing this year. Or I had the document I showed last time that just had it, it was a lot cleaner. Would you like to see that? Make it a little bit easier? Okay. And so as we, we talked last night, uh, last time, we have as staff, we have a few that we would highly recommend because there are just things that we're doing already and uh, we can count those. So the first one is to reduce, waive or eliminate impact fees related to moderate income housing. This is something that we will be doing every year, every two years. This one will actually be a two-year strategy. Uh, and so what we're looking at is we would, uh, we're updating some, uh, which one is it? I don't have it listed here. Sorry, I grabbed the old one. I had a more updated one. Grabbed the wrong one. I'm gonna have to look right here. So it is, we'll be updating our storm, storm drain master plan. So what we do is every year, every two years, we update a new master plan. So we have a storm drain master tran- plan, a transportation, a sewer, a water, a pressurized irrigation. So we have all these different master plans and we try to update them every five years. So we have a rotation where every year we'll be updating a new master plan. And within that master plan, uh, we'll look at reducing the impact fee for moderate income housing um, for that specific one. So this would be the storm drain impact fee by ten percent for detached accessory dwelling units. And so that's what we've done in the last few years. Uh, they're okay with that. They've approved it each time. So that's why we recommend uh, the planning commission do this one because it is uh, one that we're gonna be doing anyways because we have to update our master plans and we get credit for it. And so this would be a two-year strategy. Uh, our goal would be we would start updating it. And uh, we would get it approved by August first. And then we would update the fee schedule by the following year. Now we probably get it done before then. But by putting those deadlines, we can count it as a two-year strategy. So we just have to get it approved before August first and then we have to update our fee schedule by the following year. And then we don't have to, we have a strategy that we don't have to worry about next year because this is a two-year strategy. So it kind of helps out. So we don't have to review as much, you know, each year. So that is the, the first one. Sorry, I, I might have to go off of this one because I grabbed the wrong one and I don't know where the one that I updated that ha- has like what we're actually doing in the timelines. I grabbed the wrong one, so it might take a little while to find it. So we'll just go off of this. Um, so what we'll do is the first strategy, strategy E, we have four options. This one is related to internal or external accessory dwelling units. Um, so reducing regulations. So the first option we have is allowing it in R fifteen. We've had multiple people, uh, multiple, excuse me, residents that have contacted us that want to do these in the R fifteen zone. So the first option is we would by the August first, we would do a code amendment to allow detached accessory dwelling units in the R fifteen zone. Uh, we've done this in the past. We've done it to the R eight and R ten. They have counted it, so we know it works. Uh, and so that, that's option number one. Option number two is what we have been working on in the past. We've had a couple discussion items uh, on reducing setbacks and changing the definition of the rear yard for accessory apartments. And so what we do there, if this one's chosen um, by the city council is we would just have a code amendment would need to be approved by August first, that would change the setbacks and the definition of rear, rear yard. So that's option number two. Option number three is doing the open house like we did this past year. So we do the same thing. We would just notify another area of the city. So this year we did an open house for people in the R eight zone and an MSR zone. We sent out letters to everyone that lived in that area. And uh, we had different professionals come from banking to construction to real estate. And we had a meeting, went over the codes. They went and talked to people and uh, those professionals, they came and talked to Jason and I, told us their concerns about different things and what was holding them back. And those were the discussions we were having about setbacks. Um, so that is option number three is holding that again this year. And we'd probably do part of the R ten zone. R ten zone is the largest area, the largest zone we have in the city. So we probably won't be able to do all the R ten. We just pick a section of the city and send out notification letters. So that's option number three. And then option number four uh, would be to, this is something that Aspen had found when we were trying to find uh, strategies, what another city has done. They have a special use permit that allows uh, for accessory dwelling units, a detached accessory dwelling unit. Um, and whi- which would allow it to be in any, any zone if you have a single family home. And so we can implement that. And the areas that right now don't allow it, they would have to get a special use permit. So they would have to go through a process and pay a fee for that special use permit. But uh, if they're in our twelve zone or our fifteen or our twenty, they could still do an accessory apartment. It would just be an additional step until we allow it in that zone. Um, and so there's that option number four. Um, do, how would the planning commission like to do this? Do you want to go through all the uh, strategies or do you want to discuss strategy one and the different options and then move on? Uh, to see which one the planning commission likes? Or would you like to go through all the strategies?
As we go before we move on. Okay. Um, the consensus from this side is we should discuss as we go. What do you guys think? All right, let's do that.
Okay. I like option four a lot. Um.
The special use permit?
Mm-hmm. Because I can picture implementing that one this year, number like the R fifteen the next year with an open house the next year, kind of like flip flopping it. And so that's just my thoughts on it.
You mentioned there's been some interest from residents of the city. Um, of these four, which would you say would satisfy the most?
For the residents?
For the residents that were interested.
The R fifteen, allowing it in the R fifteen.
But that could also be utilized with option four.
Yeah, exactly. Especially use permit would work in that case as well.
It could, yeah, it could. Um, the only uh, it would, we would have to find, there would have to be kind of a little administration fee for the special use permit and then we'd have to figure out the process to, to approve that. It'd probably just be staff. Um, and so it can, but if there, if you're looking at what the residents, at least what we've heard, um, it was, they're looking for option one. Um, at least from the discussions I've had, that would be what they are looking for, um, would be option one, at least from the few people I've heard from. Which, you know, it, option four does work too, but for the people in R fifteen, then it just create a little bit more of a process for them.
Okay.
Do we have any other um, areas like this in the code where we have a special use permit? It seems like a concept that we haven't really discussed before and I'm just kind of curious how exactly that would work.
Yeah, this is, it'd be something new. I, I've worked in other cities that uh, have, have done this. Uh, the one downside is once you open that door, do we open it to other things? Um, that, that could cause a problem possibly, something to look at. Uh, in other cities I've worked in, that hadn't happened yet, but I could see somebody coming in and saying, hey, you allowed for a special use permit to allow this in any zone, so I want to propose this. And so it might, you could possibly see a problem there, but I haven't seen it in the past. But it has been discussed in other cities I've worked in of that could be a possibility.
Okay. And how, um, like what would the criteria be for the special use permit? Is it really just a come pay your fee and submit an application and you're good to go? Or is there like a list of criteria that would have to be met to ensure that it would work on, you know, a given site?
So I believe the one that you looked at, it was pretty much just meeting the. meeting the criteria of what's existing at currently for a detached ADU. So we would just look, make sure they're meeting the requirements like we would on any regular one, because, uh, we're gonna have to review any detached ADU anyways because they require a building permit. And so we would look at it at the building permit to make sure that they're meeting all those requirements. But this would require us to review it at the special use permit level and then they would have to get a building permit. But it would probably be, you just have to meet the same criteria. But that, if we decide to go that route, that's something that we can look into more and have a discussion about is if, do we wanna add any additional? Because it is a special use permit.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, and it, it could be, they have to get a rental to, it's something we haven't done either, but it could be a license they have to get. Um, and, uh, keep updated, you know, and maybe we can do something with that, that license or. So there could be different options. It's something we haven't explored too much yet. Uh, we're waiting to see kinda what direction the planning commission and city council gave.
Okay. Any other thoughts on which of those four options would be the most desirable?
I still like option four the best.
I've been on the fence about option four and option one. Yeah, I don't know. It's hard to, uh, weigh what the potential downsides would be for the special use permit, not having any experience with it, right?
Yeah, it's something.
Where there's been interest in the R15, I think I kinda leaned in that direction. But, um, I do like the fact that a special use permit would allow someone who's interested to do it anywhere in the city without waiting for us to catch up with the code.
Yeah.
But once that's out there, it's hard to pull it back to.
That as well.
Yeah, that's, uh, that's the two downsides I see is do we open up almost like a floodgate if people see it?
I don't think you'll see a floodgate, but I, I think it's more to your point that not just this area of the code, but then they could say, can I have a special use permit for other areas of the code as well?
Yeah. And then once you get it in the code, it's harder to then once we are done being like, okay, should we get, should we remove this? Cause we only have.
So if we do that, we might have just requested a little bit more um, research on special use permits and how they work.
Yeah.
Cause I've never been involved with those either.
I see it if they're meeting the setbacks of the D, the DADU. Um, and it fits in their yard, then it, it works and it, it can be permitted for their yard, but no one, not just everyone can put it in their backyard if they're in R15 or R20, whatever that may be. So that's, I think the special use permit, it sounds special, but it's just a permit that's saying, okay, you can fit a DADU in your backyard. You know? And so I don't know what more would be entailed with that, that they'd get confused that they could do anything anywhere. So, but I know that's, uh, people will interpret it a lot of different ways.
Well, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think what you were saying is that people will see that we've done a special use permit for this. And so they might say, well, why don't you do a special use permit for whatever the other thing is that I want?
Yeah.
Because you've already set a precedent by doing it for these.
Cause we're meeting moderate income housing needs.
Yeah.
And nothing else.
That's one way you could attack it, right? Draw a line that you're gonna cross, but.
It's just one thing to, to think about because it is something we haven't done in the past. And so there's, there is good and bad to, to each, each option. And that's, that would just be my one on the option four is.
To be cautious about, yeah.
Yeah, does it, now people are gonna come in and be like, well, I want a special use permit to allow this use in the residential zone. Cause you're allowing other things and yes, it is for moderate income housing. So we, we, we do have that, but.
Well, cause we have conditional use permits. We have special permits for people to do like their even seasonal events. There is already like special events for things, but it has to make sense for the purpose and the reason.
Yeah.
And that's, if they're coming in, in a R15 and R20 zone, they should have plenty of room in their yard to fit the setbacks of a DADU and, and no one should even feel that effect really in that neighborhood. So, I don't know, but I, so I would lean to option one or four still as well. And I'm fine with going to option one if we're like, we're not ready to open that window or that door of special permits. Then I would go to option one because that's the people are wanting that more.
Do you, do you know if the community you spoke to has actually used this special use permit or is it just something they have out there? Has anybody actually applied for and used it?
Right. Um, it's Provo that uses it, so I'd be happy to reach out to them and find out how it's gone. But I don't know the specifics as of tonight.
Okay.
Yeah, there's, looking through, I, a lot of cities don't have this for detached ADUs. There might be, only be a few and Provo is the only one we've found so far for the special use permit.
Okay, should we chew on that for a minute and move on to the next one?
So, so either one or four is kinda consensus for that.
I think so.
Strategy with those options.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so next we'll go to strategy two. So this one only has one strategy. It's the one that, oh yeah, that is the one we already went over. So that is the storm drain. That's the one that we highly recommend because we're gonna do it anyways. If we say yes or no, we're gonna be updating the storm drain plan.
So do up.
Yeah, exactly. Alright, so strategy three, this is the catch-all. Now, if you remember the planning commission training we had where they said there's strategy Z. That was a kind of a, if it's not listed in the strategies and you can use this. This one, I worked with the state, had multiple ideas, a lot of, uh, several of them were shot down saying it wouldn't work. This one they said would. So it, all the strategies we have had on here, I have worked with the state and been in contact, uh, through phone calls, emails, talking with them. So all these strategies we know, they said they would count. And so we should be good. You don't have to worry about, is this gonna count or not? Cause I have worked with them on that, but. So this is the one, it's kind of a catch-all. This is one that wasn't listed within, uh, the strategies. What it would be, they gave us credit for this last year. If you remember, what we did is we reduced the size of the minimum square footage requirements within the main street residential zone. So we had, uh, studio apartments. I think they were at 600 square feet. We reduced it down to 500 and so forth. Uh, each one from studio apartments to two bedroom, all the way up to two bedroom, we reduced them by a hundred square feet. We use this strategy as a, as the incentive, giving them an incentive. They didn't see reducing the minimum square footage as an incentive. So they said we couldn't use that strategy with this, this year. So we are using it for strategy Z. And they said that'd be, that would be okay. So what we would do this year is we did it in MSR. We would move to the MSC. And, uh, reduce it the same way that we reduced it last year, just by a hundred feet. And it'd be the exact same square footage as we did in MSR. And then, uh, kind of the, the process that we'd have to follow is we'd have to get that, uh, passed by August 1st of this year. Then we've got strategy four. This is another one we highly recommend. It's, uh, deals with our city's water reclamation facility or WRF. We used this strategy last year. We're just, uh, onto the next phase of that project. So what this is gonna be, and so this is one that we hire, highly recommend because we're updating the WRF and they'll give us credit for it. But what it'll be is that the construction costs for upgrading the WRF that contract will be approved by August 1st of this year and then construction will start by August 1st of next year. Uh, th- those dates mu- it might happen before then, but again, if we do it this way, this will be a two-year strategy. And so we can keep this strategy for two years. And if we do both of those, we have two of them that are two-year strategies and next year we only have to find three new strategies. Make it a little bit easier. And so that is one, again, we highly recommend because it's gonna happen and they'll give us credit. And then strategy number five, this only has one option. This is the incentive that we used last year for reducing the, um, the unit size in MSR. But this year what we're looking at is, if you remember Jason Bond, our assistant city manager, when this first came out, he, uh, proposed one of the strategies to be if you're in a PUD and you do moderate income housing, then you can have a 6% increase, uh, density increase. And that's one of those options. If you remember in the PUD, there's several different ways you can get density bonuses. That was just one of those. Um, we haven't had anyone use it yet. Um, we haven't had a PUD since then, but we haven't had anyone use that. But it'd be along the same lines. We give them two options. We'd say you can increase your density if you provide moderate income housing and it's deed restricted. That's what we require right now. That was passed. And then you can have a 6% increase. This would be, or you can, uh, if you provide 10% of the units, if 10% of the units are built to the minimum unit size within the PUD, then you can have a 6% increase in density. So they could have the option of a deed restricted moderate income housing. Or you have to build to the minimum size. So if it's a home or a town home or an apartment, 10% of them have to be built to the minimum size, then they can have a 6%. So they can choose one or the other for moderate income housing. And so that would be strategy five. And then the last strategy has two options. Strategy six. And that is, uh, rezoning, rezoning for either higher density or moderate income housing. So option one, they're very similar, but option one's a little bit more broad. It's, this Santa Queen City will work with landowners, developers and builders to rezone property that is near commercial or mixed use areas. So it's a little bit more broad, uh, and we would just have to start discussions. So we wouldn't have to rezone it by August 1st of 2025. We just need to start some type of discussion um, before August. So there's that option. Or option number two is Santa Queen City will work with landowner to rezone property in the R8 zone to the MSR. Cause there's several areas, um, in the R8 that borders MSR that we could look at possibly contacting the resident and seeing if they wanted to rezone to the MSR. It doesn't mean that they're gonna go and start building townhomes. And this means we're in contact to see if that's something they wanna do. Do they wanna rezone to the MSR and then later on it can be built to, uh, those standards where they, they can do, um, they can build multifamily and, or whatever else is in the MSR. Uh, but that, that is the second option. So we have two options. One's a little bit more broad. One is more focused on, we're gonna look at R8 and see if there's one. Cause there's a few that are over by, um, I can't remember the park name now, Centennial Park. Um, where they already have multifamily, uh, close by there. And there's certain areas that you just expanded a little, talk to the resident, uh, see if they're willing to do the MSR and maybe in the future you get a few, a little more, uh, multifamily there because there is already multifamily. So it's not gonna have a, a huge impact because there's already multifamily in that area. And so that's kinda what we're looking at, not, it doesn't have to be that specific location, but example like that. So those are the two options for strategy six. So again, strategy one and strategy six have multiple options. You just need to choose one if you decide to choose one of those strategies. But you gotta choose five out of the six. And then, uh, forward a recommendation to the city council and we also need a hold of public hearing.
Excuse me, other than one and six, the other ones were all the highly recommended options. Is that right?
No, um, whoop, there we go. The highly recommended ones were strategy two, three and four. Two, three and four. Um, five, uh, we don't have that as a recommended because two, three and four are items that we're already working on and we're gonna do. Just make sure I told you right. Yeah, definitely two and four, but three, we, they didn't fight us at all on three in the past. And so we highly recommend that one because we've done it in the past where it's moving to the next zone in the main street business district area. So three, sorry, two, three and four are the ones we highly recommend.
Okay, very good. Alright, think about that commissioners while we take care of the public hearing. Thanks for the reminder on that. So, um, because this is, is a amendment to the general plan, we do need to have a public hearing. So we will open that now at 7:46 and invite any comments. Okay, we will close the public hearing at 7:46. Um, maybe we should start the discussion with, um, inviting any feedback on the highly recommended options. Is everyone okay with those? Any concerns about those? Okay.
Yeah.
That's two through four.
That's two through four, two, three and four. Okay.
Well, two, four.
Three of them are done. We're almost done. We just need to get two more.
Okay, then I like option one on strategy one.
That's R15, right?
And I like strategy five.
Strategy five was.
Those are, those are the ones.
Six percent to 10%.
Oh yeah, the PUD option. I would agree with that. I'm not a fan of six.
I'd agree with those exactly.
Yeah, I think I would too. Um, six is, yeah, six was not my top choice either. Um, rezoning is hard. Um, unless there's, you know, an interest in the city immediately or, you know, some interest from those property owners, I would say maybe we pass on that. What'd you guys think down here?
I like strategy six, option one. If we were going with strategy six, I'd go with option one. Um, but I like strategy five as well. Um, we just saw how um, how little, uh, inventory there is for moderate income housing. And so i- it's good to be able to help and accommodate those coming in, trying to bring in moderate income housing and help with that bonus density. So I like, I like trying to work with that and it's unfortunate prices are where they are because I mean, I, I don't like to see these setbacks getting smaller and smaller, but that's all that people can afford. And with the cost of everything now and and so I don't know. I like, I do like five and I like strategy six, option one. And I'd be okay with strategy one, option one or four, like we said, so probably option one would be good.
Strategy one, option one seems like the safer choice.
And what we can do is, um, because it's just something we saw this in the last few weeks. So that's why we haven't had a lot of time to, uh, look it over. So if it's something that you wanna move forward with option one, we can look at option five, four, option four.
The special use permit.
Yeah, the special use permit for next year, we can do some more research and then when it comes up next year, we can, uh, we'll have more information for you. We just haven't had the time to kinda look at that.
I think that's a good idea. See if you actually get an application with strat, with option one. Cause we haven't had it yet.
Right.
So.
Yeah, we haven't had a single.
And then you could expand to those other zones with using option four.
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
I like that. How do you feel?
I like it. I think that's a great idea.
Okay. So I think we've got some consensus around option one of option one. Strategy one of, option one. Option one of strategy one.
Right.
Um.
Okay.
So I think we just need to choose between five and six. Excuse me. Did we have any strong opinions on five versus six?
I prefer five over six myself.
I prefer five over six also.
Okay. I think I probably do as well. Did you have a strong opinion?
Let me think about it.
I wanna know your opinion because as a Realtor, like I'm not in that world. So I do wanna know your opinion on that before I say my opinion, because I don't. This is all new to me, so I say you should state your opinion, so we, so I.
So just to be clear, sorry, I asked you a question and I interrupted you. Um, what, um, So just to clear, sorry, I asked you a question and I interrupted you. Um, what um? What would that mean? The first option of strategy six, exactly. Would that be? Rezoning into a commercial or mixed use zone that allows for higher density? Is that the point of that?
So uh, what this one is, is it has to be near. Either a commercial or a mixed use zone, but it would have to be a rezone that allows for higher density.
Okay.
Uh, so we, if you rezoned it to the R ten, well, I've had this discussion with uh Alyssa. Uh, but she is no longer the head of moderate income housing. We'll be having a new head soon. She's. Moved on, a new person in charge, but talking with her, if you rezone it from commercial to R ten. Ten thousand, that wouldn't really be considered high density. It would need to be, you know, a significant. Maybe smaller like eight, six thousand square foot townhome, something like that. That would allow for moderate income housing or moderate, yeah, affordable housing. It's a better way of putting it is allow for affordable housing. So they they look at is ten thousand square foot lot. Is wouldn't really allow for that. It would have to be smaller or like the MSR. That would allow for uh multifamily.
Okay.
It doesn't specific specifically mean multifamily, but it just means smaller lots to where you could do. Moderate income housing. So it's kind of a gray area, but I think they're more looking for pretty small lots or multifamily.
With the caveat, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I just said the reason why I don't like it is cause it doesn't guarantee that it actually would be affordable and then we're just stuck with a bunch of units that are. And smaller in size, but not affordable.
That is a problem with a lot of the strategies they have in that list is a lot of them don't guarantee. So that's why, like I've said in the past, the one I like the most is the ADU or I I. This in, you know, for me as staff, strategy five is a good one, cause we're reducing the minimum lot sizes. Um, or not reducing, but we're requiring the build to that. Doesn't mean all of them have to be, but there has to be some. That are built to the minimum size, which again, doesn't guarantee, but you have a better shot at having affordable housing.
And just a better plan for development overall.
Yeah, exactly.
One more question on the change of leadership with the, at the state. Did you uh, you have a commitment from the old director? You have a commitment from the, in writing saying that these will be accepted. So that the new director, if she's question, if you had a question, you got it in writing, the old director would accept that.
Yep, so anytime I did talk to her through the phone, I did a follow-up email and she'd email back.
So you, so you have that, that these will be accepted according to the old directors, so.
Yeah, uh, when it comes to something as big as this, I was like, I definitely want it in writing.
Yeah, so looking, looking at strategy six, um, well, strategy five and six are kind of similar. Because they could ask for smaller um lot sizes in a PUD and in their master plan agreement. Um, and then we're only making them come in with ten percent of their development. Uh, to be moderate income housing, where option one, you're, you can ask for them to have more than ten percent moderate income housing. And so there's a flip side there that you work with them through a master plan agreement. Or master development agreement to to make it how you wanna see it. And they can put restrictions on title and on the deed to say these have to be. For eighty to one hundred percent AMI users and they can keep it on that title or deed for for as long as they want. So we could say, hey, we want you to keep this as a moderate income housing area. That if they're reducing these lot sizes to this big, then um, they can only fit so big of a house on that. So you'd hope they weren't gonna rack it up to five or six hundred thousand dollars. Normally they would be in that three to four hundred thousand dollar range. Um, unless it's downtown Salt Lake, cause then they'll do that and make it really tall. But in Santaquin, that wouldn't happen and the market would dictate, no one would buy that here. It would sit for sell forever. You see, I don't know if you've seen the houses for sale here, but they started out kinda high and they've been coming down, cause no one can afford it. And no one wants to afford it, because it wouldn't make sense to get a six or seven percent loan on that high of a. Of a house payment. So they've been reducing prices, which is good. But and that's it, the market has to dictate those prices. Like people have to stop buying for a minute, say, hey, come back now. So you can't build, you can't build a mansion on a little. Unit on a little lot size, um, but then someone is getting a single family home and not a town home. And and that makes a difference too. So. That's, that's a give and take. So five and six are very similar.
So I wanna make sure I understand, you would accompany, you would like to see any rezoning that happens accompanied with a development agreement that would set some of these things in writing.
Mm-hmm, and this is just saying they're having conversations.
Yeah.
With people, it's not saying what that master development agreement looks like. So then it'd kick back to strategy five. And right now we would only allow six percent of. A PUD to have moderate income housing, where now we could switch it to ten, which is great. That's why strategy five is great. I'd like to see more moderate income housing in a development for people, so that that developer doesn't come in and just. Only allow six percent to be affordable and the rest, he he makes super expensive. So. I, I don't know. I have a lot of thoughts on it. So.
I see what you're saying. Um, I think the, maybe a potential downside, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that um, you would. In order to pursue a development agreement, you would have to have a developer lined up that's ready to go.
Mm-hmm.
Right, and so.
Yeah.
Um, I wonder if we would get anywhere with that strategy. Because you would need to be able to rezone and have someone ready to develop.
Mm-hmm.
Although the strategy, we don't necessarily have to complete the rezone, we have to.
We just have to start conversations. Um, this year and then move forward. Uh, what I can tell you is last year. We didn't have any uh rezones. The rezones we did were all staff initiated. Now that could to, that can change. People can come in and we could have eight rezones, you know, this year. You just never know what's gonna happen. So.
Yeah.
And as the market starts changing, if prices start coming down eventually, then we'll start seeing a lot, probably a lot more wanting to come in and. And develop again.
Right. With um, strategy five, do you think maybe changing the targets would, I mean.
Like the six to ten or?
Yeah, instead of the six percent, um, or the six percent density bonus for a ten percent.
Mm-hmm.
Um, block of moderate income housing, would you massage those numbers at all? And would that address some of the concerns you're talking about?
Possibly, possibly, but I like the ten percent. I, I mean, I would do a little higher. I'd do like fifteen. But I'm, I'm really a proponent of moderate income housing. I'm not a proponent of um. People getting the small lot sizes and then not having parking. And not having anywhere to park their trailers or side by sides and like crowding all the roads. I mean, that's very frustrating. Um, and so you're gonna kinda see that too, but if they truly fit in the eighty to one hundred percent AMI. Then they won't be able to afford that trailer and that side by side and so hopefully they won't be crowding that road. And so um, with the expenses how they are, that's why they're trying to get smaller lot sizes to fit just a smaller home. To get um, a single family lot.
Wouldn't then a PUD be more beneficial in that scenario anyway?
Yeah, that's, I mean, they kinda work.
Yeah.
Five and six work hand in hand. And so I like six just because you can have a talk about it and then it counts and we didn't even have to rezone anything. But um, five, I mean, five is just saying we would allow a higher density and I think ten percent is good. What are your guys' thoughts on the six or ten?
Real quick on the strategy six, we would have discussions, but. We don't wanna just look at, oh, we had a discussion, we're good, and then we don't do it. If it happens like once, you know, or something, that'd be okay, but if we constantly do that. Then my concern would be the state would come down um, on us or just change something because that's happening.
Well, maybe an approval would happen, but if discussions are happening and you're looking at a, a master plan agreement and it just isn't.
Happen before then, that would, that would definitely count.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, so I don't know. Does that make sense? I don't.
I think so.
I don't know. So I like five or six, I think. I don't know, I think either one. Either one i- is kinda work hand in hand. If we don't choose six, option one, they could try to do it in option strategy five. And we'd get credit there.
Yeah, I feel like, I feel like five is a good general option to have in the code that could be used.
Yeah.
Um, I feel like strategy six would be a good one to pursue if we knew that there was an area that was going to be developed or redeveloped. And there was interest in doing that right now, then we could get ahead of that with, like you said, a potential rezone and a development agreement.
Yeah.
Um, if we don't feel like we have a high probability of something like that happening, I think I'd lean towards five.
Yeah.
As of right now, I can't think of any off the top of my head or any discussions we've had, but that could change really quick. And so that's with the rezone. We could have in two months, a developer come in and it would work. And so that's why I think either or works. They're very similar, like you were saying. And so when it comes to. Will it work or not? I think it, it could, cause we usually, uh, last year was kinda. Out of the norm. We usually do get some people that come in and are asking and looking. And so I think either one would work and we would be okay.
I have a question too. Um, I, I was thinking of this as you were going through these six strategies. I was wondering, why do we have to choose which strategy? Why don't they say, here's all the strategies that you guys could choose to apply to your city? And if anything in these strategies happens in your city, then you should be able to apply it. Does that make sense? Like, why do we have to pick six, but then like someone comes along on number six? And we're like, oh, wait, wait until next year.
Yeah, do it next year.
Like why, like we are trying to accommodate moderate income, so why shouldn't we say, hey, guess what? This wasn't in our strategy, but bonus strategy, we got some, something else.
I, it, it makes sense and you can, all I, I can say on that one is I would recommend talking to your state representative. On that, because we've had the same discussion, cause right last year. I didn't realize he was talking. So um, last year, they told us that we can't count anything. Um, before we approve this, only after. And we had a discussion with the state and we're like, well, if we didn't choose the rezone and then we had a rezone and we were struggling with something else. We'd have to say, wait, you can't do the rezone. We need to update our general plan. You're gonna have to wait two months before we can even start to rezone. And so there, there are, um, if you have concerns, my recommendation would be to talk to your. Yeah, talk to the representative, your state representatives.
That's good feedback though, if they're watching.
Yeah.
Right, I like that idea.
I bet they're watching this.
So currently our smallest lot size is an eight thousand square foot lot, is that correct?
So uh, yes, in the R eight, uh, that's our smallest zone. We do allow for the infill development, which goes down to six thousand four hundred. Uh, that's approved by the planning commission. And then in the PUD, we allow down to six thousand. I think we allow for patio homes to go down to.
Forty-five hundred, I think.
Yeah, right around four thousand, four thousand five hundred, but if it's just a standard lot, not like a patio home. Uh, it's six thousand in the PUD.
So if the PUD wanted to do. Forty-five hundred foot lot, forty-five hundred square foot lots on, with a bunch of patio homes, they could do that. We're not holding them back. We're, we allow that.
Uh, I wouldn't say we allow it. It has to be approved by the planning commission and city council, but it is an option. Yeah.
What's that, Jeff?
Yeah. So that it's in, in the PUD code, but they would have to put it in the development agreement. Because every PUD requires a development agreement. And they, in that development agreement, if they're requesting a lower density than the, the base. Zone they're under, and so right now in the PUD, we only allow them in the R ten, the R twelve, the R fifteen, R twenty. So that means if they're asking for something less than a ten thousand square foot lot, then it has to be within that development agreement. So it doesn't mean that if they are following the PUD code, as a council member Sidaway was saying. They have to put it within that development agreement and it has, the planning commission reviews that, sends a recommendation to the city council and the city council. Would be decide if they like that or not.
But what I'm seeing with number five is even if they did approve the smaller lot size, is the unit itself that has to be built to the minimum. Size, minimum square footage size.
Yeah, that's correct, cause if you remember, we're having that discussion at the planning commission training and one of the, it was actually one of the directors. Said the cities are, we're doing all we can, but they were reducing lot sizes, but they're still building as big of a house as they can. And they're still going for five, six hundred thousand or more and they're not affordable, even though we're reducing sizes.
There's been more big houses.
Yeah, they're just doing more big houses on smaller lots. And so that's where the, the state representative and. Alyssa Gamble said, well, that's what strategy Z is for, is you can request that. Or you can require them to build to the minimum size to try to get that moderate income housing, that affordable housing. That right now they're not doing when we're building or allowing these smaller lots.
The reason I bring it up is because um. I've got history with Springville and if you go look at Brookside subdivision over there. They've got like five thousand square foot lots and nine, eleven hundred, twelve hundred foot houses. They're on them. They're just tiny. It was just a post-World War Two subdivision that was created. And so I was wondering if we're restricting anybody from doing that, but it sounds to me like the developers have found the sweet spot for profit in that they built. The biggest house they can on the um, best. Bang for their buck lot size. So, cause it's all gotta be driven by money, right? Yeah, I, if I was a developer, I would find that sweet spot for the best lot size that I could get the most house on, that I could make the most money on. Cause that's just my business.
Yep.
And but the, the state is asking us to make moderate income housing. Yet it's available if the developer decides to pursue it. So. I like our options one through five with the first one on the first one.
Well, strategy five forces them to build that smallest unit size, not only it's ten percent of their homes.
Yeah, if they want. Yeah, I like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I do like that. That's tied to the minimum unit size.
And that varies per zone. The minimum unit size.
So with that, with, within the PUD, we have specific sizes if you're within a PUD for. Uh, townhomes, for apartments and condos and single family.
Total square footage.
Yeah, total square or minimum, total square footage. So if it's in a PUD, it's not based off of the zone. We do have. Um, uh, minimum uh, size requirements in all the zones. Um, but this, in the PUD, we have specific minimums for each type of use. And we would require them to build that minimum.
And for strategy six, it would have to be a zone change near a commercial or mixed use zone that's already in place.
That's correct.
Which would imply, I think, because don't, we mostly have R eight around those zones, right?
It's mainly R eight and R ten.
Okay, so you could in theory do some R ten to R eight, for example.
I would be a little bit worried about that. It would probably be more, you'd wanna rezone it to the MSR. MSR if it was close to the main street or the RC or a PUD.
Gotcha, okay.
Cause the RC does allow for multifamily, but we would have to make sure that. It doesn't, again, have to be multifamily, but we'd wanna make sure that what they were building would look affordable. Would be shown as being affordable, so the state would be like, yes, that rezone will count.
All right, well, who's leaning towards option five? I think I am too.
Yeah, I think it's still.
Strategy five.
Strategy five.
Yes.
Thank you for keeping me honest.
And with this feedback, we, as staff, can start looking at that strategy six for next year and maybe how we can. Update it to make it a little bit better and, uh, require them to do multifamily, maybe. Change the language a little, we can kind of look into that and see if that's something planning commission and city council want to do, but. From hearing your discussion, uh, maybe next year, if you do, if strategy five is chosen. Um, by a planning commission, city council, maybe we'll see if there's something we can do with that rezone. To make it so we can require the moderate income housing through a rezone, you know, make the language a little bit better.
It scares me if you, when you say, rezone R C, because somebody rezones R C, they don't have to do residential at all, they can put storage units in there.
Yeah, they could, and so if, that's where I would be concerned, but we can do, in the development agreement, we can say. It can only be for residential, you, you could do that.
They don't necessarily need a development agreement, do they? Cause our storage is allowed in R C.
Um, state code does allow for development agreements with a, a rezone. So right now, yes, we could, I would have concerns with the R C zone, we really haven't rezoned to the R C zone in a very long time.
We've been trying to get out of R C.
Yeah, we have been trying to get out of R C, that, that was a bad example, so thank you for. For that, it would be more to M S R or really the P U D.
Yeah, so you'd have to kind of specify what the rezone to. Would be, so we didn't end up with something like that.
And that's why option two, that's why we did option two for the rezone, is we would look at the R eight. Cause we know there's some areas in there and we'd rezone to the M S R. And so that, that was kind of why we thought option two would be, uh, a good option. You know, along with option one, but option two, cause it would be a rezone to a specific zone that. We would like to see more in the city than a zone we wouldn't.
Okay, that's a good discussion, I think we, uh, have some consensus around strategy one, option one. The highly recommended option strategies, which were two, three and four, and strategy five. Does that sound right? Okay, we need to make a recommendation to the city council, would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to recommend the approval of the proposed update. Of the modern income housing plan of the general plan and recommend approval for strategies. One through five with option one on strategy one.
Okay, thank you, we have a motion by Commissioner Wade, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Moak, anything else we need to discuss? All right, let's vote Commissioner Moak.
Yes.
Commissioner Nixon.
Yes.
Commissioner Wood, yes, Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Tolman.
Yes.
Okay, that is forwarded with a positive recommendation, um, with those strategies and options as mentioned in the motion, and it was unanimous. All right.
I just wanna say, I like this slide.
I like that too.
Aspen will, uh, she, so this is coming from, uh, again, we had that open house. Uh, and one of the questions that, one of the residents came, uh, they had a question. And that question is, do we allow for home occupations in detached ADUs? And our code right now is silent on the issue. We've had a couple of discussions, but we haven't really gone into too much detail on this, uh, the planning commission asked us to. Uh, kind of go over what the major home occupations are, cause the big discussion we, uh, the planning commission had in the past is. Do we want to allow major home occupations? Uh, in detached ADUs, cause they can be allowed in the home, but do you want a second major home occupation? Uh, in a, uh, on a lot, so Aspen's, uh, gone through this and created a slideshow.
Yeah, this is just like a general overview, um, one of the big categories of. Major home occupations are children's group activities, wh- whether that's like preschool, daycare, a dance studio. Um, some of the requirements to keep in mind concerning ADUs are. The class sizes can't exceed twelve students per session and max of twenty-four students per day. And then that's max of two sessions per day, and then, um, business, business related vehicle stops at home shall not exceed forty-eight. Just keep in mind, if they were to have a major home occupation in the main dwelling and the A D U. That forty-eight stops could double. And then, um, any play areas have to be enclosed by a six-foot fence. And then as far as like industrial businesses that are typically done outside of the home. Such as welding, carpentry, furniture, manufacturing, et cetera. Their requirements are, they can't operate between the hours of seven P M to eight A M. Um, there's several noise restrictions, the power equipment can't exceed the seventy-four D V. Measured from fifty feet, and then they, there's the requirement for the business machinery noise. Levels not to exceed fifty-five, and then they have to be in designated areas of operation and obtain a conditional use permit. And then just some other like general requirements we have for the major home occupation. Um, any commercial vehicles have to be parked, um, behind a six-foot tall fence, they can't be in the front. Parking's already kind of an issue at times with the ADUs. Um, if they were to have any kind of business light, lighting, that has to be shielded and directed downwards away from adjoining properties. Um, any activity between eight P M to six A M must be conducted with enclosed doors unless compatible with like uses in areas. And then we have a lot of food or beverage, home occupations, and their biggest thing is, they just have to comply with state and county standards. Um, these are types of businesses that are not allowed, mortuaries, crematoriums, medical slash dental offices, junkyards. Uh, storage, service, repair, sales or rental of tow trucks, R Vs, A T Vs and motorized vehicles, fitness or health spas. And then any home occupation which entails use of chemicals exceeding your usual household amounts. And then, just as, uh, general, most cities limit A D U home occupations to professional office space. Or do not allow home occupations at all?
And, uh, one other, just as she was going through it, that popped in my mind, so. For a minor home occupation, we allow for four business vehicles, eh, can be stored on the property, but again, they have to be stored behind the fence. A, uh, can, a major home occupation can allow more, that would be determined by the planning commission. But it can allow for more than four, so that's, that's something else to consider too. Is, uh, they would be allowed to store more than four commercial businesses, uh, per our code right now, or business vehicles.
Follow-up questions on home occupations?
So would it make sense to say that if you've got a, a major home occupation in the main dwelling? And you've got an A D U that you want to rent another major home occupation in? That the, um, restrictions for the amount of. Uh, vehicles, et cetera, should be placed on the entire property? So that if they wanted to do that, and instead of doubling the amount of traffic, they would still have the same restriction for the same amount of traffic? Does that make sense?
Yeah, we could definitely look at, we'd have to specifically like write that into the code and create that as part of a code amendment, but it's something to look into.
Put those restrictions per parcel instead of per dwelling unit.
So we, we could do that, if we kept it at the forty-eight, then it would. There's a chance, I'd have to look, but it just, it might fall under a minor home occupation and be allowed to do it that way. I can't remember off the top of my head, how many kids we allow for a minor, it might be twelve per day, or it might be eight. It's eight, okay, um, and so if we restrict it to. The twenty-four, because it'd be twenty-four kids if you allowed for the forty-eight trips, cause for drop-off and pickup. Um, the minor home occupation allows for sixteen.
And so, so split that out and say it's per parcel.
Yeah, you can do per, per parcel, and that would work, but it would be very close. Just off by a few kids to a minor, and so. One thing to look at is, if that's the way you wanna go, then maybe we just, uh, go with the minor home occupation. Cause it's very close to the minor, then it doesn't cause so much confusion, um, when people are reading the code, but. If that's a, a way you guys wanna, uh, the planning commission wants to go, we can definitely.
And just not allow major home occupations at all in A D U's, only minor home occupations?
Um, we can, we can do that, it's, there are. I'd definitely say there are some concerns with the major, at least I, I would have, and I know that some of the residents that I've talked to in the past. Have concerns that even their neighbor doing this a regular major home occupation, we've had concerns. But they're meeting their requirements. But we could do it per parcel too, that, that is an option, but with it being. So close, one thing to look at is, do we didn't, just stick with the minor? Cause, um, doing it per parcel, keeping it at the, the twenty-four. The minor allows for the sixteen, so yes, they are allowed eight, or that'd be eight additional. Um, or six additional, eight additional kids, um, if you kept it with the major for those two.
Six, sixteen additional stops, yeah.
Yeah, so it would, it would, that could work. So the, I guess, the two things to look at, cause I'm not, so, I, I, I'm good either way, I'm just trying to throw out pros and cons to each.
Seems like it'd be easier to administer if it was just only allowed for minor occupation, occupations in an A D U. She's gotta remember, we're allowing these A D Us in smaller. Zones right now, smaller, with lot sizes, so it's gonna increase traffic in these smaller.
So can we rewrite it so that the common, the combined total for the lot or the parcel? Is the safety gauging factor? Would that be the right way to go? And then. The, the other item for that would be the size of lots, cause if you have really small lots. You wouldn't want forty-eight trips within so many feet. So you'd have to say, you know, if you're gonna do a major home occupation on a really tiny lot. Then you'd still have to be restricted to the amount of. That'd be, that's kind of that, you kind of have to do that in order to keep the safety factor up.
Yeah, that's a tough one.
And this, this is just referring to home occupations in an A D U. Major or minor.
Yeah, uh, this would be specifically for detached.
Yeah.
Yeah, the detached A D U.
Detached A D U, so it's already a living space, is what they've created it.
Yeah.
I don't even know if they could fit that many people in the required. How many people, they're trying to fit twelve and a thousand square foot. Space, I don't, uh, been singing lessons maybe, but no dancing and.
Maybe even like haircut, you know, having a couple of people come, cause we have a lot of those, we have a lot of. Type of.
Like you said, so it's kind of, I don't know if a major could even fit in a detached, it'd be more minor. Yeah. Yeah, for a detached, yeah.
How would you manage conflicts in cases like? Say someone wants to do a minor childcare business at their A D U, but there's already a major home occupation at the main dwelling.
Um, there is in our home occupation, I don't remember the exact feet, but. You can't have two children's group activities with, I wanna say it's like three hundred feet.
I think it's, uh, you can't have a major home occupation right now within three hundred feet.
Of another one?
In a way, right now, that restricts the, the. A D U, a detached A D U, if the main dwelling has a major home occupation, it restricts it, but it's. Hard to see it not clear, so if that's the way we wanna stick with it, it'd probably be good to put language in the code that specifically says. You know, uh, we don't wanna see, we don't want major home occupations in detached A D Us. But right now, I just thought of that, it kind of does restrict it, but if that's the way we wanna stay. Then we should probably put some.
So am I catching your question in a different way, in that what if they have a major home occupation in the primary residence? And a minor in the A D U and their bulk childcare?
Or whatever. That, but also if there's some other conflict that makes them incompatible. And how would we deal with that?
We do also require already on all business applications, the property owner has to give their consent. So I think that could also help resolve some conflict that may come up. Um, but the daycare, they're like, children's care is the only one that has that specific, like, they can't be within a certain distance of each other.
Does that include major and minor? So if I have a major in the main house and a minor in the A D U, can I do that, or is it too close?
It's only for major home occupations, and so when, if you remember, we've done a couple of daycares in the past. And one of the requirements was, you can't be within three hundred if it was a major home occupation daycare. But it's only specifically for childcare or, um. Lessons, you know, singing lessons, those type of things, it's not for the other type of major home occupation.
So if I'm CEO of Watch Your Kids Incorporated, I've just found a way to get more kids on my property by. Starting a minor home business in my A D U.
It's a possibility, but again, we do require the homeowner to, if.
Homeowner, so now I just, now I just build another A, an A D U and now I've got, boom, I've got a whole other space and I can expand by that many kids.
If somebody's not living in it, then it's not, we don't consider it a dwelling unit and it'd be an accessory building. And they would have to stick with one. But if, if they are renting it out and somebody else is wanting to do that, they would have to get the signature of the property owner. And then, uh, if they did, then yes, they would be allowed, but the property owner would be okay with it, but. That is the thing is, I know there's been some concerns about, well, we had this detached A D U and what if they just run a business out of it? If they do that, then it's, that is their home occupation for that lot, because it's not being used as a dwelling unit. It's used as an accessory dwelling, or, uh, not accessory building. And so we would look at it as accessory building, and then they have their own requirements they have to meet. Um, so with the minor, you can only use fifty percent. And if you wanna use more than that of a accessory building, then it goes to a major home occupation.
And there was a note. Right here, front of my face, most cities are limited A D U home occupations to professional office space, which means. A desk and, and phone and stuff.
We also, in the major home occupation, or actually all home occupations, they don't allow for satellite offices. So the owner of the business has to be like the employee, so that could also help.
Cause yeah, if it. That, that's something we check too, cause the owner, yeah, the owner of the business has to live at the property. And now what we would do if it was a detached A D U, is the owner or the person living. In that detached A D U would have to be the owner of the business that's being run out of it. Cause that's something we require right now, just on the regular houses, we look and say, okay. Is the owner, the owner of the business, like they have to, they have to match.
I don't know if I like, I don't think I'd do a major home occupation, I think I'd do minor home occupations. Or limit it to professional office spaces only. Well, how, where would like a Nell technician fall under, cause I could see her having one person at a time. She's running this A D U, detached A D U. And she, she got her Nell license and someone, just one person at a time is coming and going. Is that under the minor?
That would be under the minor, so, uh, the minor allows for eight people to visit, uh, the home a day. And so you can only have eight visitors, so that would work for like hair, hair salon or the Nells or. An accountant, you know, different things like that.
So I don't know if I, I don't think I like having ADUs be used for major home occupation, but minor, I think I, I'm okay with.
I think I agree with that. I think the smaller nature of the ADU lends itself better to a minor home occupation. And I think we would probably open ourselves up to some, to problems, right, if we allowed for major home occupations in there?
Yeah.
I would rather start out a little bit more restrictive and then let someone make the case for why we should allow something more. And consider that way than to allow it from the beginning and run into problems.
I agree.
What happens right now, since we don't, since the code is silent, if someone applies for it?
So right now, we would say it wouldn't be allowed, but if they wanted to fight it, it could get messy. And so that's why we want to put some language in there, is how we look at it is, if it's not listed, we don't permit it, but it could be fought.
Because it's not listed.
Yeah, it, it could be contested in, I don't know which way it would go. So that's why we want to, we want to get, before we get our first detached ADU, we want to get some language in there.
So as of right now, can you do a minor in ADU? Is that, is it silent right now?
So it's silent on both.
I, I think, I'm right along with you. I think minor is good. Major's a little, like they're not big enough anyways. But I guess you could get 12 babies in there, but. Yeah.
Someone would try.
Oh, I know. It's like, let's not allow the major.
Let's restrict it.
And the other way I'd look at it too is the accessory apartments, they're accessory to the main dwelling. And so that's another good way. So to look at it is they're supposed to be, you know, they're, they're smaller, they're not as high. They're, you know, subordinate to the main dwelling. And so you can look at it that way too with the, the home occupation.
Right.
So is this something that you would like to, to write up a kind of a draft and have another discussion? Or move forward with a draft and have a public hearing? Do you have any opinions on how you'd like to proceed?
Have we had requests for home?
Uh, we haven't had, not yet, because we haven't had any detached ADUs.
Okay.
And so we haven't run into it yet, but that's kind of why we want to get it done now, before we get one. Because then we have kind of ambiguity in the code. It's silent. We look at it as not permitted, but it could cause some problems.
But there was some interest, right, at the open house?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, somebody was asking about it. Not for a major. They just asked if home occupations at all were allowed.
If we said no, would it be just being a jerk to do that?
Uh, just to say no to all home occupations?
In ADUs?
In ADUs.
You can, like, that's, that's really up to.
Would there be downsides to that?
Where you could do some subset of minor, right, like is kind of recommended here?
We, if that's the way Planning Commission wants to proceed, we could write up a list of, you know, ones that, you know, like maybe hair salons, professional offices, things like that. And.
I think that would make sense, and I'd like us to think through, yeah, where there might be issues if there's a major home occupation at the primary residence with another occupation at the ADU. Like a minor childcare business at the ADU might not be compatible with whatever's going on with the major home occupation. And so maybe, maybe it's fine, maybe there's no issues, but I just want to make sure we think through those things.
So would that be, so would you put a condition on it that says the ADU can run a minor home business with the permission of the landowner? Because if their primary residence is doing something that they thought might be conflicting with the other one, they could just say, no, we're not going to do that.
And I think that's already required.
Yes, we do require that on the application, the property owner. So the business owner has to sign it and the property owner has to sign it. And so the, we've had a few instances where they're in an apartment and the owner wouldn't sign it and they weren't able to do their business because the owner of the property didn't want that type of business there.
Yeah. So maybe we'd be okay, but seems like there could be some friction points there somewhere.
Well, I don't know that I'd be open to like just saying no, minor, because there are definitely like, like a Nell technician. Like especially bringing in business into the city, like that's what we want. We want businesses here. Even if it's small, we want businesses here. So I, I don't want to say no to minor. I do, I, I'm okay with saying no to major because it doesn't make sense to have major, but.
Maybe ask staff to put together a list of the low impact.
Yeah.
Home occupations.
Yeah.
Look at that list and then just approve which ones we think are appropriate, which ones aren't.
Yeah, I like that idea.
Me too.
Okay.
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay, anything else we need to talk about on this? All right, yeah, I think that'll be good. That'll be a good discussion.
So yeah, well, just to make sure we got everything, so Planning Commission wants us to come up with a list of different
Minor.
Minor home occupations, like the professional office, like an accountant, something like that. Hair salon, different things, and then we can review that as a discussion, pick some.
See if there's anything there we don't want to allow in ADUs.
And then after that point, then maybe get the ordinance prepared. Okay, perfect.
Sound good?
I like that.
That sounds good. All right, very good. Okay, I think we're done with agenda item number three, so we'll move on to agenda item number four. We need to discuss approving the minutes from our last meeting on January 14th, 2025. Do we need to have any discussion about those minutes? And if not, would anyone like to make a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from January 14th, 2025.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Nixon. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Wait. All in favor? Yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed? Okay, those minutes are approved and it's unanimous. All right, staff, what else do we need to discuss?
Don't have really too much right now. We don't have any pending applications for next Planning Commission. We may try to work on this home occupation, the list, and have, see if we can get that ready for next Planning Commission. We do have a few things that'll be in the works for, you know, down the road, maybe the next couple of Planning Commissions. But for next one, it, we'll, we'll try to get that home occupation so we can have that discussion again. But that's really all we have in the pipeline right now.
Okay, sounds good. There is a chance that I may not be able to make it to the February 28th meeting. I don't know yet, but I should know by next time, so. Yeah.
So we probably, and Vice Chair, I believe, is Drew.
Yes.
Was.
Or was, no, no, it's Mike. I'm sorry.
I'll be moving to adjourn really quick.
I'm getting bad. I need to be better at commissioner and last name, sorry. But, uh, so there is a possibility on the 24th that we will, 28th, thank you. It's getting late. I am struggling. That we'll have a conditional use for a major home occupation for a business that will be doing dance and also singing. They want to have two classes a day, 12 kids, so a total of 24. And there's a chance we'll have that on the 28th, so.
Okay.
And that, that will be a public hearing on that too. We have to notify all the neighbors within 300 feet. And so it's in the core area of town, but we, we probably will have that on the 28th. And then the first one in February, we'll, we'll try to get this done. If not, we'll have that on the 28th too.
Okay. All right, Commissioners, anything else we need to talk about? Should we get out of here?
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn at 8:40.
We are adjourned at 8:40?